On this March 12th, 2020, I'd like to welcome you to our council meeting. In the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so, the following will apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, please fill out a request form and present it to the city clerk present in the council chambers. Each speaker shall be allotted three minutes to address the council unless such time is extended by the mayor or by questions from council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers. Thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that you please silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with our invocation. We'll ask everyone to please stand. We'll ask Pastor Randy Law, who is director for the National Day of Prayer of Osceola County, to come and lead us in our invocation. Please remain standing for the invocation or the pledge of allegiance following.
First Timothy two says, "First of all then, I urge that supplications, prayers, intercessions, and thanksgiving be made for all people, for kings and all who are in high positions, that we may lead a peaceful and quiet life, godly and dignified in every way. This is good, and it is pleasing in the sight of God our Savior, who desires all people to be saved and to come to the knowledge of the truth." With that said, this is our prayer. Dear Lord, I ask that you would help the leaders of this city to make decisions according to your wisdom, word, and direction, not according to fear, man's way, greed, or for personal gain. Only you know for sure what the future holds. May these men and women make the decisions that are for the good of the whole community now and for generations to come if you should carry that long. May we depend on your word as our nation's founders did in building this great nation we call the United States. In the name of Jesus, I ask this.
Thank you, Pastor Law. Please, Joe Mill. The pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Blackwell?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Cooper?
Here.
Councilmember Askew?
Here.
Councilmember Trace?
Our first proclamation is in recognition of March for Meals Month to Wilda Belice? Bel- Belisi? I'm sorry.
That's Belial.
Belial. Thank you. If you'll come on up, I'll read the proclamation and we'll let you share. Whereas the city of St. Cloud makes every effort to recognize programs that make significant contributions to the quality of life of St. Cloud residents, whereas senior nutrition programs provide meals and nutrition services to those who are ill, frail, elderly, nutritionally at risk, or disabled by providing meals and helping these individuals live independently in their homes and avoid premature institutionalization; and whereas Meals on Wheels programs and senior dining clubs provide not only nutritious meals but also important daily contact and socialization; and whereas one of the goals of senior nutrition program is to ensure no senior goes to bed hungry; and whereas senior nutrition programs are community-based and rely on the support of the community's resources, both human and financial, in order to achieve their goals; and whereas the Osceola Council on Aging's Meals on Wheels program has operated in Osceola County for forty-nine years, providing services to the frail and vulnerable residents of our community; and whereas in 2019, the Osceola Council on Aging's Nutrition and Meals on Wheels program provided over five-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifteen pounds of food that was served to the needy in Osceola County, one-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-five-hundred-and-eight hot nutritious meals were served and delivered to one-thousand-and-eighteen clients, and eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven traditional holiday meals were served during the holiday season; and whereas senior nutrition programs across Florida and throughout the United States are participating in the March for Meals campaign in order to increase public awareness of the work and needs of senior nutrition programs to raise funds and recruit volunteers to assist in the delivery of meals and other nutritious services. Now therefore, I, Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, do hereby proclaim March 2020 as March for Meals Month.
Well, I'm sorry, Wilda couldn't be here. We're getting ready for our 5K run on Saturday, which is still on. It's going to be at the Kissimmee Lakefront. Registration starts at seven, and it is a really fun day. We have contests. It is a timed race for those of you who like to run for the hobby. And I'm definitely not one of the runners, but I just want to thank you so much for all the support that the city of St. Cloud and the wonderful residents of St. Cloud -- I am one as well -- to the Meals on Wheels and helping us keep making sure that no senior goes hungry. So, thank you very much. And we baked cookies for you because we really appreciate all the help.
Go ahead.
Do you want to take pictures for?
Well, let's do that.
I get excited about my cookies, sorry. Yes. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Dinner, perfect.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. This looks delish. Thank you. I would just like to say, I don't know of any program that does more to serve our community and especially the elderly than Meals on Wheels and the Osceola Center for Aging. And could you pass for that?
Oh, did I go off the track?
And so, a few of you lucky people out there will get some cookies. Second of all, I have a proclamation in recognition of Confederate Memorial Day to Whereas April is the month in which the Confederate states of America began and ended their four-year struggle for a sovereign and independent nation; and whereas our state constitution sets aside April the twenty-sixth as a day to observe and honor the memory of those who lost their lives in the war between the states; and whereas more than six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand men lost their lives defending what they believed in; and whereas in proportion to its population, Florida contributed more soldiers and more sailors than any other state; and whereas all Floridians should be knowledgeable about the history of the war between the states and the over one-hundred-and-eighty battles, actions, and skirmishes fought in this state; and whereas we study the war between the states for the same reason we study all wars, to understand the historical events that compel them so we may continue to learn together and seek, whenever possible, to avoid future conflicts. Now therefore, I, Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, 2020, as Confederate Memorial Day. Thank you. Want to say something? And we want to thank all the city of St. Cloud for all they do in promoting, you know, our battle at Narkhusi Mill. That's the big help we get for using the park out there. And also, we're glad that St. Cloud hasn't bowed down to the political correct pressure that's going on all over the country where a certain faction is trying to rewrite history and to erase history and replace it with something that a lot of it is not true. So, we urge everybody to read your, read your history books, don't watch TV movies. And in Osceola County here, we've got eighty-three, I think, Confederate veterans buried all over the county, and our group maintains their graves each year. You can see their names right down here at the park. We have a monument there with all the names of the Confederate veterans of Osceola County, and it's like a who's who of all the pioneer families. Partons, Bronsons, Whelies, Overstreets, they're all on there. So, that was a large part of this county's history. Even though there was no fighting in Osceola County, it still was very important, thanks to Jacob Summerlin, who our camp is named after, and we appreciate it. Did I say that right?
Melissa's not here, but Anna Curas, yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
I'm going to read the proclamation, then I'm going to turn around and let you do a presentation.
Okay.
Whereas since 1790, the U.S. Census Bureau is required by the Constitution of the United States of America every ten years to conduct a count of the population, which provides an historic opportunity for Osceola County to help shape the foundation of our society and play an active role in American democracy; and whereas more than six-hundred-and-seventy-five billion dollars per year in federal and state funding is allocated to communities, and decisions are made in matters of national and local importance based on census data, including healthcare, community development, housing, education, transportation, social services, employment, and much more; and whereas census data determines how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives, as well as the redistricting of state legislatures, county and city councils, and voting districts; and whereas the 2020 Census creates hundreds of thousands of jobs across the nation; and whereas the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law, whereas a united voice from businesses, government, community-based, and faith-based organizations, educators, media, and others will allow the 2020 Census message to reach a broader audience, providing trusted advocates who can spark positive conversations about the 2020 Census. Now therefore, I, Nathan Blackwell, Mayor of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, proclaim that the city of St. Cloud does hereby support the goals and ideals of the 2020 Census and declares April the first, 2020, as Census Day.
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for supporting the census, which is very important for the count of St. Cloud. I thought there was going to be a presentation, but what is very important is that this decennial census happens every ten years, and so we have only one chance to count the population. The six-hundred-and-seventy-five--
Is this part of your presentation?
Yes.
We're going to turn the podium around so you can watch your presentation and--
I can just move the microphone so that way-- Okay, take a picture.
I'm sorry.
Don't worry. Okay.
There's a clip right there.
All right. Well, thank you. So, the 2020 Census, there is two very important reasons why we do the decennial census every ten years. One is the political power, which Mayor Blackwell explained, that count will determine the representation in Congress, and also money. The six-hundred-and-seventy-five billion dollars a year for the next ten years will be allocated to the, to the state's communities, cities, and communities, depending on the count, the population count. In 2010, the United States answered seventy-two percent to the census. Where, I'm sorry, Florida did seventy-one percent, and the Osceola, Osceola County did seventy-two percent in 2000, where it went one percent down in 2010. So, your support and your, and your continuous encouragement, we hope to get a hundred percent this time around. So, what is different this time is that we are encouraging the first method of responding to the census is online. So, everyone should be getting a invitation letter, starting actually today, where it's going to have a URL and a ID, where you go online with that ID and you enter all your information for your family, or everyone that's living under the roof, under your roof. It is very important to note that the census will never ask for social security numbers or donation, any request for any political party, or account, PIN codes, or password. That's very important. If anyone comes and says this is something that we need, you know it's not coming from the census. The data is confidential, and it is sealed for seventy-two years. So, all the information that is gathered this year will be sealed for seventy-two years, and many of us, I'm not going to be here, so it's not going to really matter in seventy-two years. But it is important because the data that is collected can only be used to produce statistics. That's what is turned to the president at the end of the year. That is what businesses use, is statistics. No information, no specific information for anyone. So, our goal is to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. So, the fact is that we have one chance to make a difference and to shape the future of St. Cloud for the next ten years, and it is now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Curas. Does anyone have any questions you'd like to ask? Well, thank you very much, and we certainly will encourage participation in the census, and we'd like to encourage all of you that are listening to make every effort, not only to participate, but to encourage others to do the same. Thank you so much. At this time, we'd like to have a presentation by Brian Wheeler, who will give us an update on our water.
For this past week, we've been continuing the process of ice picking, and in fact, this week, we started the ice picking of the main transmission line from the water plant to tie into Old Canoe Creek Road. The last two nights, we did the first two sections. We're successful, and so there's two more nights tonight and Friday night, which will complete the completion of the transmission line ice picking, and then we'll move back into doing the regular ice picking within the residential subdivisions. We've received a proposed third amendment to the contract with Suez for Ice Picking, which would carry the ice picking through the month of April. We're in the process of working with that and evaluating it in terms of where to go with the authorization you all provided at the last meeting for funding. That'll, will provide the funding to allow us to move into that, to continue that, continue that work. Also, this week, we met, last week, we met with a, what we call a traditional picker, but isn't the ice picking, and looking at, to bring them onboard to help complement and supplement the work from the ice picking company. We've given them some proposed, some lines that we would like to have them to try to look at providing a price for and doing the picking. The advantage of a traditional picking company is that they can do longer runs of pipe at one time versus the ice picking. The negative of using a traditional picker is the line has to be taken out of service for much, for eight to ten hours, and then it has to be disinfected, and then you have to go through two days of boil water notices to collect bacterological samples. So, it's a lot more work and disruption for the, for the customers, but the advantage, like I said, is that they can do a longer run of pipe at one time, so they can complement each other in terms of the work they're doing and bring more resources to bear as we, as we do that. So, we are looking to get a proposal from them and see what that, what that will bring, and hopefully, if that works out, we'll bring them onboard also at the same time. And so, that's kind of where we're at right now in terms of the overall effort. Be open to any questions.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you, ma'am. We certainly appreciate all that you are doing to help clean up our water concerns, and we appreciate you and everyone who works in your department. Thank you so much.
Yes, a lot of people in the department, not me doing the work, a lot of those other guys are doing it.
Well, thank you for your leadership. As many of you know, the coronavirus is a significant topic in our country at this point, and we would like to ask Joe Silvestri, Chief Silvestri, our chief of the fire department, if he'll please come and give us an update on where we're at.
Evening, Mayor, council members, Joe Silvestri, Fire Chief, City Manager, citizens and visitors of St. Cloud. Tonight, I'd like to go over the coronavirus, give you a little information about the virus itself, give you some statistical data, where we are with this virus, and some of the things that we're implementing in the city moving forward until we get over this crisis. So, on March seventh, there was a declaration from the governor's office to consider this an emergency and put the Department of Health in charge, and then two days later, he did another declaration, state of emergency, where the Emergency Management Division will be the coordinating office, and the Department of Health will be in charge of the incident. So, coronavirus is a virus that's been around. It just happens, this is a novel coronavirus, means a new strand of virus that's out there that generated in China, and it has the same characteristics as the flu. The thing about this virus that's got everybody stirred up with the Department of Health is that it's new, and they're not sure how it's transmitted. They don't have a lot of data on it. So, that's why it's really, you're seeing a lot of media coverage on this because they just don't have a lot of data. Like the influenza, they have data on that, they know how to track it, and they can trend it. This one's very new, and it's spread very quickly, and I believe today, they actually considered it a pandemic. The virus is really impacting the elder generations of elderly from age sixty-plus. Most of the cases that in the United States are from travel, and there are a lot of cases that have been recovered, meaning people have had the virus and now are recovering. In the state of Florida, so I'll go over some statistics, and I'll start with the state, and then I'll work myself out. The state of Florida currently, I believe, the last that I looked at the data from the Department of Health, is thirty-five positive cases in the state. There's one individual that's twenty-nine years old, and the other cases are from age forty-seven to eighty-one. There have been two deaths in the state, and there's about four-hundred-and-seventy-six current cases being monitoring. That just means that they're monitoring patients that have signs involved in some way of testing, and it hasn't been confirmed yet. We raised the plane a little bit in the U.S. There's twelve-hundred-and-fifteen cases, and the majority of those cases, if you know, are out up in the Midwest area. And there's been thirty-six deaths in totality in the United States. Worldwide, there is one-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-three cases. Sixty-eight-thousand-three-hundred-and-ten are cases that have recovered, and there is four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighteen deaths, based on the latest information that I got from the CDC. And there's one-hundred-and-sixteen countries that are involved right now, and those countries are expanding and de-escalating as we go. There's forty-two states in the United States that are affected right now, and just prior to this meeting, Seminole County just had their first case. This virus is, eventually is going to make its way through the United States, I believe. And I think through good handwashing, good social interchanges with the Department of Health in the United States, you know, working diligently, if you've seen the presidential statements that have been made, you know, we're doing due diligence and trying to contain this and mitigate it as quickly as we can. We, as a city, have met and put things in place. So, we are doing some active cleaning on a regular basis, that we've increased and enhanced those procedures. We put a travel policy in place for our employees who are traveling to make sure that we not only protect them, but protect the rest of the staff. We're meeting continuously with our local partners, the hospital, Department of Health, and Fire, and we're also meeting locally with our other local governmental agencies. We had a meeting today to develop a plan and have one voice and one plan of action. So, we've been doing this over the last couple of days. We've put things in place for public safety procedures, to do pre-screening through 911 call system, and also for protection of our, our first responders. We put procedures in place for our activities and programs that we have within the city, and we're in the process of reviewing and revising our continuing of operations plan for the city as well. I just want to reassure you and the citizens and visitors here that the city of St. Cloud is on top of the issue, and we are working closely with the Department of Health and the other governmental agencies to make sure that our plans are in line and that we're doing the right things for the right reasons. I would also encourage you all and the citizens and visitors as well to make sure that you're getting the right information, and the right information is not always the information off of social media and off the media, that you really need to look at the sites of the State Department if you're going to do traveling, the Center of Disease Control, the CDC, the Department of Health. That is where the true factual information is at. I want everybody and be reassured that, you know, it's no different than if you had a flu, and we're in flu season, that's still out there. So, when you're around large groups of people, you know, viruses spread through airborne, to do good precautions. If you're not in good health, stay home. If you're sick, stay home. If there's an area that, you know, is outbreak, like the Northwest, you probably want to not travel there until it settles down. So, just use good common sense and good social hygiene, if I could use that. And I'm not a real fan of social distancing, but that seems to be the buzzword. But I just want to assure the leadership here underneath Bill Sturgeon's leadership that we're on top of it, and we're monitoring it right now, and we're putting things in place to make sure that if we do have a case in Osceola or St. Cloud, that we're prepared to address it.
Do you have any questions? Well, we certainly appreciate all that you're doing, and thank you for staying, helping to stay on top of this. Just want to add that, you know, we all need to work together to protect our loved ones, especially those who are greatest at risk, especially the elderly and anyone who may have underlying medical conditions like asthma, high blood pressure, heart problems, people who are known to be more likely to develop serious illnesses. We need to make sure and use caution with them. I like what the Health Department said today was, "Stay calm and wash your hands and do that regularly." So, thank you very much.
Chief, one quick question.
Keith.
Are we planning on canceling any events at the, at the senior center?
At this time, through the executive board, it's business as usual, monitoring, you know, we're still keeping things in place. We're being cautious, and as the data and the information changes daily, we'll reevaluate that and address it as it comes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. At this time, we come to our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not in the agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be provided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. If you come forward, please state your name and address for the record, and we'll ask that you please limit your comments to three minutes. Tom, I mean John rather, Lasky.
Mr. Mayor?
See you.
Counsel? Since St. Cloud is known as a soldier city, the Osceola Veterans Council has been providing military honors for all veterans within the county for the last, since, since the late nineteen forties. So, I'm here tonight to extend to the council a personal invitation to our annual OCVC dinner, which is going to be held at the Elf's Club on the twenty-fifth of April, and also to invite you to participate in Memorial Day at Mount Peace. The VFW is putting it on this year, along with the American Legion. So, and I want to get as much of the community involved as possible. So, if I may, can I approach the council?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Dave?
Thanks, John.
Pete?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Dan, is that all possible? Might you get this on the website?
All right.
Make it as much as possible.
Thank you very much. We'll help, we'll help promote it.
Need one for the record.
Yes, do you have another copy?
Need one for the record. Thank you.
And we've been providing the military service-- And we've been providing the military services for all veterans irregardless of the branch. Unfortunately, I can't be here for the proclamation welcoming the Vietnam Veterans Home, even though I did serve during that timeframe, because I'm going to be up at the Arctic Circle conducting a class. So I will think about it, okay? So, and think of all of you for honoring the vets. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Lasky, we appreciate your service to our country as well as all of those who have faithfully served us and are veterans. They certainly need to be remembered. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? All right. See you there. Sir. I see no one else. We just speak to the council, we'll move on to our consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the City Council wish to speak on a consent item, they have the same opportunity. First of all, does anyone in the council have any items on the consent agenda? Councilmember Matheny.
Thanks, I'd like to pull A and C for discussion.
I'd like to pull items E and G.
We will pull items A, B, C, and D. John, why don't we go to items? Oh, Miss John, sorry.
E and G. Echo.
E and G?
Yeah, not B.
And A and C. A, C, E, G.
Okay. Ms. Matheny, what's the first item you'd like to address?
Thank you. So I had some issues with the way this resolution was worded, and I had spoken with Mr. Manzares about it. I think it was not clear when you read it. I believe the intent is outside of the right-of-way, there will be an easement that the utility lines go in, but it's not really written that clearly. So I know Mr. Manzares was working on some language while we've been in here trying to like clean that up. It just says back a sidewalk, it says the easement back a sidewalk. Well, that doesn't necessarily mean it's outside the right-of-way. So I wanted to clarify that. And I also wanted to mention to council, I lived in North Carolina for a couple of years and did engineering up there, and a lot of the communities up there would have their right-of-way internal to their subdivision, like a 50-foot right-of-way, and then they would have 10-foot easements outside the right-of-way for the dry lines. So that's where the power, the cable, the telephone, you know, any dry line, obviously not water lines, would go in there. And it made a really nice development for designing and conflicts and things like that. So this easement would only be on one side, you know, there's not going to be an easement on both sides of the road for power, it'll only run down one side of the road typically. So I'm just kind of throwing that out there as maybe that's something we should look into here to have utility easements outside of the right-of-way to like move those lines into that. Just kind of seeing the temperament of the council and to see what language you have crafted for this item.
You want to answer the first part first?
Mr. Manzares?
Well, I've got the language that Deputy Mayor Matheny asked for, I've got some suggestive language, but I think our first one is directed at staff, look bringing something back that might address the issue that she was talking about.
Is there any objections to bringing that back for consideration?
Yeah.
You just have to watch the street trees as well. I know there's always the planning argument for street trees and the dry utilities and easements.
So the language that Deputy Mayor Matheny and I talked about is on page one of the proposed resolution in paragraph one. And it's the, I believe, the section is the, it's really the last, second to last, well, third to last sentence of the, of that first paragraph on the number one. And it currently reads, "Electric power utility shall be in a minimum 10-foot easement behind the sidewalk." So what I would suggested and wrote that that sentence would actually be changed to read, "Electric power utility shall be located in a minimum 10-foot easement outside and adjacent to the right-of-way."
Mm-hmm, I like that better.
Yes.
More clear.
If you have a single-loaded road, you still have the easement on the other side, not just.
Right. I like that language, I don't know.
No problem.
It just wasn't that clear when you read it to me, so I think that puts the belt and suspenders on.
Are there any objections to that?
No. I don't think there's any objections.
Okay.
Any clarification?
Just before we move on to the next item, so when that item, if you approve that item on the consent agenda as with one vote, then it would include that revised language?
Yes.
Okay. Want me to go to item C?
Yes.
Okay, so item C is the authorization to get GAI consultants to look at the corridor of Florida Avenue. I had a couple of issues with the agenda package, one being the proposal from GAI said that it was a fully signalized intersection at Florida and 192, which it's not. The other, the big issue I had was, it says in the scope of services that the possible solutions might include bicycle, pedestrian, and vehicle uses, and then the first bullet says bike, pedestrian trail, and median only. I thought the whole intent of this corridor analysis was to not touch the median, was to say, and so I wanted to see if you guys felt the same way. I'd like to remove that option out of their scope of work, like they need to come up with ways to do bicycle and pedestrians and preserve the trees in the corridor down the center of Florida Avenue. I just wanted to see if everybody kind of agreed with it.
That was my understanding as well, is the median stays.
Yeah, but it's not what their scope says, a bicycle pedestrian trail in median only. So they're looking at alternatives, but that was an alternative that they were going to analyze, and I don't even want that on the table, I want them to find ways to do it and leave the median intact.
Probably pull that, clean it up with them. That sounds like direction, we'll come back next meeting with that.
So is there any objections?
That work?
I mean, I think, I mean, I think we can, I'm, okay, moving forward, I just wanted to make that clarification and see if there was two other council members who agreed with me. If not, we can pull it.
I think that's already the intent. Deputy City Manager Miller did a presentation at the Opportunity Zone discussion on last Friday, and it showed, it showed what I think your, the intent is, the two lanes on one side and the bike lanes on the other side.
That's what the master plan shows, but that's not what this proposal says, so.
Is that something where we can just get them to clean up as staff and approve, like you're fine with the?
I'm fine moving forward with it, I just wanted to be known for the record, like, don't touch the median, that's not an option. I think they're here.
Yeah.
I understand, yeah, so.
You don't check with that, do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay. That was, I just wanted to make those.
That's pretty clear, don't touch the median.
Don't touch the median, come up with, that's the whole idea, it's like you're doing a, you're doing a survey to come up with ideas, like be creative and leave our tree canopy.
All right.
That's it for me.
Thank you. Council Trace?
E is an echo. This is the emergency traffic signal for Station 33 wide. Don't disagree with putting in a signal there, I just, I just think it's, it'd be a better option for us to put in a light at Deer Creek. I know there's a lot of issues of folks getting in and out, and there's, in my mind, a safety issue there at some point with that many homes with a, without a signalized intersection. I know we're, we gave staff direction to look at, doing studies to see if that's warranted, but putting in essentially a blinking light quarter-mile, half-mile down the road, I didn't know if we put in a light at Deer Creek, can we time that with a Friars Cove light to where if the engine leaves the, the fire engine leaves the station, it can time the lights to where it gives itself an opening to get out without having to put in a light at Friars Cove Lane that just blinks. Sorry, so essentially moving the light from there to Deer Creek and then trying to time the lights or, you know, fiber optic connection between the Friars Cove light and the Deer Creek light to give yourself an opening to get the fire engine out.
So you just don't want a flashing light?
I, yeah, we're putting in, this will be $500,000 for a flashing light.
Well, I know too, in my agenda, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I know too, in my agenda review, there was discussions about possibly coordinating the signals with the school district too for pedestrian features, and that's not in here, but that cost, I've been told, is, you know, anything that was above and beyond what's in our scope would be borne by, by others. So maybe it would be a good idea to kind of pull this item and revisit that whole area and come up with a more universal solution.
Nassim has a puzzled look, so I don't know if we have questions. I'm looking at a map.
Could I have Mr. Gendor come up?
Yes.
Nassim Gendor, Public Works Director. In order to speak about the Deer Creek, we, the light at, excuse me, Deer Creek, that was directed by the council, our previous council meeting, Save St. Cloud Public Works has gone into Deer Creek subdivision, done traffic counts, gathered the information along with police incidents or reports in that area, and has provided that to Osso County Traffic Engineering, who controls traffic flow along the main road, Canoe Creek Road on that, so, and that's in the works. The emergency signal at Friars Cove Lane for traffic, excuse me, for Fire Station 33, to my understanding, is the location for it being at where it, where it's proposed is specifically for emergency response vehicles only, and I'm not sure about eliminating that light and adding a light at Deer Creek would solve that issue in terms of emergency response time on that. And of course, the discussion in regards to adding pedestrian feature to the emergency light, which would be at Friars Cove Lane, that's definitely something that would be in discussion in terms of opt, an option that we would, we would investigate in order to ensure, you know, safe pedestrian traffic as well, to align with the safe route to school initiative as well. So I hope I'm able to answer your question, but the light at Friars Cove Lane specifically for emergency, as an emergency light, is, the sole purpose for it is to be at emergency, for emergency response vehicles. So placing a light at Deer Creek would probably still require a light to be at Friars Cove Lane specifically for emergency response vehicles.
I think that's what you were saying, right?
No, I was saying, if you could, if you could do the signal timing to where, when an engine leaves the station, it stops traffic from heading, at Friars Cove Road, from heading north, and then stops traffic at Deer Creek from heading south where there's no more cars right there, and then it can get out. It'll still have to stop, just like, I think even if it was a traffic light, they slow down to turn, but I just didn't know if it.
You can, I mean, that can be done because they just did it over there at Old Tampa and what is that, Hoagland, they just timed it between a signal and then the railroad crossing is right next to it, and so they timed it so that you don't get trapped on the railroad tracks. So.
I just want to throw it out, if I got support, then that's fine, if not, then.
Is that something that Tetra Tech could look into, maybe, like with the scope, is, I mean, or are they just doing one task and that's it?
Task authorizations for, to provide for a design for emergency signaling, but as long as, speaking on the scope, I believe we can actually ask them in order to investigate other options and determine what the feasibility for that would be prior to moving on to the actual design. So that's something we definitely, we can ask, we can ask them in terms of, you know, determining a different option added.
The only reason I bring it up is the number one complaint from everyone I talk to that lives in Deer Creek is we need a light at the intersection there to be able to get out. That's the only reason I bring it up.
So can we just pull it? Can we just pull it and bring it back?
Yeah, if you pull it, if you definitely, if you pull this, then we'll have to come and, well, we'll have to come present something specifically for feasibility study from Tetra Tech. So we'll be, we'll have to come back with another task order for approval to the City Council, which would be in two weeks. So we won't be able to do anything for two weeks to determine feasibility.
Do we want to pull it?
I'd say pull it.
I'd say pull it, but isn't that something you can also work out with, I'm sorry, Mayor, if it's all right. We can, we can talk to Osceola County, get with the lighting, isn't that something we can just do without any cost, just to see if that's something?
We've already reached out to them and have discussions going with them.
Yeah, and we have, we've had, we have discussions going with them for a traffic signal at Deer Creek.
Okay.
On that. Yes, sir.
So we have a consensus to pull it then?
Okay.
All right. Next, Mr. Trace?
Item G, it's the interlocal agreement between both cities for the recycling. I just found a discrepancy in Section 5H. It says 30 days and 60 days at the same time for the same thing.
Right, that's a typo, the numerical reference to 60 should actually be 30. So it says wording is 30 and the numerical is 30, and that was a mistake that only an engineer could find.
It was on two different pages, you had to actually like look at it.
So he's saying I should have caught it?
Yeah, pretty much.
I caught a bunch of other stuff.
He spoke first, I don't know if you didn't catch it. So yeah, when you approve it, it would be as with that correction.
So you're going to make those revisions? We have a consensus, make those corrections, am I right?
Yep.
Any other, any other items from the council? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to the consent agenda? Could I entertain a motion or?
Motion to approve.
Oh, it's got to be more complicated than that.
Try to do what?
It's got to be more complicated than that.
All right, so.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion with the revisions on item A, as well as the corrections on item G.
And C.
And, did I miss C?
And pulling item G.
And pulling item E.
Pulling item E.
It's already been pulled, so.
Yes.
With that clarification, we have a motion from Councilmember Askew. Do I have a second? Second. Second, Councilmember Cooper, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to public hearings. Madam Clerk, would you rely on number one?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2020-10. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Chapter 36 Solid Waste of the City of St. Cloud Code, deleting Article 3, Landfill, Section 3, Section 36-71, 36-72, and 36-73, and creating new Article 3 Solid Waste Impact Fee, Section 36-71. Fee imposition, Section 36-72. Adoption of technical support as basis of impact fees, Section 36-73. Definitions, Section 36-74. Determination of fee, Section 36-75. Collection of solid waste impact, Section 36-76. Solid Waste Impact Fee Schedule, Section 36-77. Use of funds collected, Section 36-78. Exemptions, Section 36-79. Interpretation of Article and Fee Schedule, Section 36-80. Effective Other Regulations and Requirements, Section 36-81. Alternative calculation of solid waste impact fees, and Section 36-81. Alternative calculation of solid waste impact fees, and Section 36-82. Appeals Providing Perseverability Conflict Codification and Effective Date.
Thank you, do you have someone to speak to this? Mr. Gendor?
Nassim Gendor, Public Works Director. This is the second and final hearing for the Solid Waste Impact Fee Ordinance. The initial, the first reading was provided, was given at the first, excuse me, the prior council meeting, City Council meeting by the consultant, Wright Pierce. It was presented to the council, and there was no, there was no changes from that first reading to this reading. This is implement, this is, this is an ordinance based off the study that was done by Wright Pierce, the consultant, for the Save St. Cloud Waste, Solid Waste Program, which recommends implementing a solid waste impact fee. The study was, the impact fee study was dated December 2019, as well as the ordinance that's being submitted is implementing the recommendations of that study. And then, of course, the first reading of the ordinance was on February 27, 2020. The fees for the, impact fees are shown on the screen above, for the free resolution to be heard during the City Council Action Section, where the proposed fees are. where the proposed fees are residential bin customers is $422.55. Commercial customers for bin would be $367.54, and dumpster would be $3,814.13. This is for, uh, new businesses, new construction. The staff recommends approval, uh, and we request, we request approval of their ordinance.
Thank you. Would any of, and the audience want to speak to this resolution or ordinance? If not, we'll have discussion or motion by council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion for approval by Councilmember Matheny, a second by Councilmember Cooper. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Would you like to, uh, go ahead and read item number two and number four, and number, number three and four?
First public hearing introduction for ordinance 2020 dash, I mean, 2020-04, in ordinance of the city council of city of Saint Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of Saint Cloud approximately 36.27 acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Maple Simmons Road, west of West Shore Drive, in accordance with voluntary annexations provisions of chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. First reading and transmittal for ordinance number 2020-05, in ordinance of the city council of city of Saint Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation, low-density residential to approximately 36.27 acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Maple Simmons Road, west of West Shore Drive, providing for amending of the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, applicability and effect, survivability, copies on file and effective date. First public hearing and introduction for ordinance 2020-06, in ordinance of the city council of city of Saint Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of R1, single-family dwelling compatible with low-density residential fu- future land use designation, adopted by ordinance number 2020-05, for approximately 36.27 acres identified as Hickory Tree, located east of Hickory Tree Road, north of Maple Simmons Road, west of West Shore Drive, providing for entering the designation, designation of official zoning map, following the planning commission's recommendations, proof of publication, survivability, conflicts, and codification, effective, conflicts and effective dates.
Good evening. Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Since, um, this was submitted, the applicant has requested that this item be continued to a date certain of April 9th, 2020.
April 9? What's the pleasure of the council? Do we need to have public comment on that?
Not on a motion to continue. It's not a final action, so if you want to continue, all the items would just be one motion to continue, all the red items to April 9th.
Mr. Cooper has made, Councilmember Cooper has made a motion for continuance of items two, three, and four.
Yes, sir.
Second.
And we have a second from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Those items will be continued on April the 9th. Brings us to item number five. Madam Clerk?
First public hearing introduction for ordinance number 2020-07, in ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of R1B, single-family dwelling compatible with a low-density residential future land use designation, adopted by ordinance number 2004-97, for approximately 9.48 acres identified as Deer Creek West Expansion, located south of Bristol Cove Lane and north of Bobby Lee Lane, providing for entering the designation of official zoning map, following the planning commission's recommendations, and proof of publication, survivability, conflicts, and effective date.
Andre Anderson, Community Development Director. Since this item was submitted, the applicant has requested that this item be continued to a date certain of May 14th, 2020.
Do I have a motion for continuance to 515?
14.
14.
14, is that what?
514.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper, a second from Matheny. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to council action, item number one.
Resolution 2020-044R, a resolution of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, implementing a solid waste impact fee rate, repealing any resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date.
Nassim, Public Works Director. This is the resolution that, uh, aligns with the ordinance that was just, uh, presented for the, with the final reading. Uh, so this is the impact fee ord, uh, resolution. Uh, Wright Pierce provides the city of Saint Cloud the solid waste program impact fee study that was dated in December 2019. The final public hearing for this ordinance was, uh, ordinance 2020-100, uh, presented today, March 12th, 2020. The ordinance allows for the fee to be implemented by resolution. The solid waste impact fee will go into effect as of July 1st, 2020. Uh, and again, here is a, uh, the fee structure. Um, the proposed impact fees for the new, for new construction are residential bin customers, $422.55. For commercial customers, bin, $367.54. Commercial customers dumpster, $3,814.13. Staff recommends approval, uh, and we request the city council, uh, recommends, uh, approves. Any questions?
Would then one of the audience like to speak to this item? Do you have discussion or motion by council?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second by Councilmember Askew. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number two.
Discussion of possible action regarding appointment to committee vacancies for the Economic Development Advisory Committee.
You'll notice, um,
Madam Clerk?
We had two applicants. One of them was not qualified, so that leaves one applicant, Maureen Cook. And that is an at-large appointment for seat number seven.
Would anyone in the audience want to speak to this item? Could I entertain a motion from council?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Cooper. Second from Councilmember Askew for appointing Maureen Cook to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Askew?
Aye.
Councilmember Trace?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Cooper?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Mr. Mizaras?
I do not have anything, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sturgeon?
Good evening, Mayor, council. I have two updates, one on the Saint Cloud Hotel. Um, the owner has informed us that he just hired a new general contractor. They've hired an electrician to put temporary power to the building and hired a contractor to put the fire sprinkler system back online. Um, the other thing is we've requested a monthly update from the owner, and he's agreed to do that, so we stay on top of that. The second one is another issue that the county brought up before the council before is the music downtown. That is actually going to bid. If you recall, we had an issue with it being on the same frequency as our automatic meters. And, uh, that closes in one month. They have to design the system, so hopefully we can move that along.
It's going to be a month away.
Yes, it goes out this Sunday and closes April 16th. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Askew?
I don't have anything, um, Mayor, but I see a couple, uh, Boy Scouts in the back, uh, the room back there, if you want to maybe see what they're here for.
Well, certainly good to see you gentlemen here, and tell us what troop you're from. Come on up to the microphone if you would.
No, no, no. Don't get the yell.
Introduce yourself.
That would be too easy.
Get the public speaking mayor badge too, right?
All right. We'll introduce you to man's greatest fear besides dying as public speaker.
Hello, we're from Troop 272. We're here for citizenship and the community.
And what is your name?
Enrique.
Enrique. And what is the name of the gentleman there behind you? Would you like to say something?
Uh, I'm Scott Hilton. I'm here for the, to get the citizenship and the community mayor badge as well, so, yeah.
Well, I hope tonight's been a wonderful, dynamic, memorable learning experience. You've been blessed tonight. It's been a short meeting. We normally don't get out here at 11:00. It's good to have you guys here. We certainly, uh, wish you the best. Uh, you have anything you want to say, Mr.?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I'm done. Thank you.
Councilmember Trace?
I was going to bring up the same thing, so perfect.
That's it? Councilmember Matheny?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Cooper?
Oh, I get to keep us until 11 o'clock then.
I hope not.
Just a quick question. Uh, Mr. Sturgeon, can you tell me about the city employee, the, the healthcare um, medications and stuff like that? I know we talked about it a long time ago. Where is the medications? Is it coming from the United States, or is this coming Canada, or?
I'm not following you, Mr. Cooper. As far as pharmaceuticals, for employees, like pharmacy?
Yes, pharmacy, for the city.
We have Canada meds. That's one, it's called Saint Cloud Meds, but it's a candidate, Canadian company that provides those medications.
Comes from Canada?
Yes, sir. That's one, and then also their, you know, prescriptions from CVS and Walgreens and Play- and Publix, you know.
Nothing is, nothing is coming from China.
No, sir, not that I know of.
Okay, that was a question. Okay, that's it. Make it easy on you.
And I do not have anything, you, other than we just encourage everyone to please stay calm and stay safe and wash your hands. With that, we bring, uh, forward our information section and report section. Thursday, March the 26th, uh, 2020, there'll be another city council meeting at 6:30 PM here in City Hall Council Chambers. I'd like to also make you aware that a proclamation recognition of flood awareness week was issued by our city. You also have available the following reports, warrant list number eight, and, uh, the Recreation Advisory Committee, many minutes from the January, uh, 2020 meeting were approved and are available for your review. With that, there's nothing else on our agenda. We will consider ourselves adjourned.